Morning. Welcome to the 10 a.m. Business Meeting. I know in Employee Labor, Jessica is out. I see Kathy on Budget. You just got sit down and now we're making your move. Yeah.
Good morning. Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. I was out most of last week, but I worked online at home. And I was working on budget and trying to assist areas that have questions. Today is the due date for the Budget, Budget Boss submissions. And then there's also on our portal, there are budget forms for those that need to request a position or technology, things of that nature. And so those are out there on the portal. And so they have until the end of today. And if there's anyone that needs some help or extension, they just need to let me know. So. And my, my goal is for the next two weeks to look at all the submissions and analyze everything and to make sure we're in good standing. So I can produce a preliminary budget for the county by the required due date, which is in September.
Which is in September.
And then on risk management.
Wait, before that.
Yes.
Are, are there any things that you, you want to offer categorically to the people that submit? Because we've done things one way and you're, you're, you're trying to actually move us forward.
Yes. Well, most of the forms are the, the traditional forms they've seen before. And Budget Boss, there isn't any major enhancements done to it yet. I hope to have some enhancements done for the next budget time that we go around and work with IT to help us improve some things. But there just wasn't enough time to get any of that put in place this time. So pretty much everything is similar to what they've done before in the past as far as budget submission items, forms, timelines.
Okay, so the, the current status of Budget Boss is such that it does pretty much what you need, but it's not full support for how you think things should be done.
Yeah. And then there's a few things this year that, that we're having a little bit of difficulty with. For example, it, it, it's, I don't know, it's, it's just been unique. In, in that 2025, it's supposed to have no ability to do data entry at the department's level on labor and benefits, but it's open, wide open right now. So I don't know why. So those are things that we're going to look to fix for the next cycle.
You, you've also been concerned, and so was Tracy before, of lots of slots holding positions open. So do you have a guideline for, for the departments?
No, I haven't developed anything yet, but there are quite a few positions that are still vacant, that have been vacant. In some cases, I've noticed there's positions that are vacant since they were created. They've never had a person in them.
And, and you'd like to clean that up as I recall. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I think there are some positions that are very high level, very hard to find, and you might understand we're looking for a jewel, but for a lot of the other stuff, if you went for six months without it, maybe it's not valid.
Yeah, I don't know. But there is quite a few positions that are like that. And then in the case of, for example, Superior Court asked me to look at their positions. And when I did my research, I went back to 21. And they actually have a position that was approved, but wasn't in the budget and wasn't funded. So, you know, those things are happening too, where I'm going back and I'm re- trying to recreate what should have happened. And, you know, there's, you know, from turnover, there's too many people that can touch this salary database that we have. And so I know that Tracy had some issues with some data entry that was done wrong and formulas that weren't correct in there before that, that they went through and corrected. But there's just some, I mean, I can't explain what happened on that one, the Superior Court one.
You know, I'm wondering, and see what my colleagues think. After you get through this budget cycle and, and you get a sense of things that are not working like they should or whatnot, should we maybe have a workshop and just kind of see how we fix and, and repair some of this stuff?
Yeah. On the salary database, really, if we have the ability to use PeopleSoft at a more elevated level to produce this database for us would be my goal. But I understand that several people have looked at it before and couldn't, couldn't get PeopleSoft to do what we need it to do. So I'd like to take another stab at that, looking at it, because I'm used to having a position. It basically, it's what's called a position management system. And you manage vacant as well as active positions. That's what this does. And, and then it's linked to be able to fully load your positions for benefits, things like that. But anyway, we need to relook at it because it's very labor intensive to do what we're doing. We did try to automate a couple of things like with that chat GPT or whatever, but it was very minor what we did. So we really, we need to look at a better way.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't also preclude the Position Management System. Our system should always be, have import and export capabilities. And so if a tool is tailored to what you know we need, maybe we buy it, but it's got to export. And I.
Yeah, this one doesn't, that's what the problem is with this one. It doesn't import anything from PeopleSoft. We're actually manually putting it in.
But, but.
That's very inefficient.
If you had a PMS, you could presumably.
Right, right, right.
There's, in, in your machinations, I know you come across scenarios. How easy is it for you to present as, well, under scenario A, you've got this. Under scenario B, you've got this. And what I'm thinking about scenarios, we, we're under pressure from Superior Court to say we need a sixth judge. And that is something you just don't add on and just say, oh, well.
And I think, I think there's a request currently in, in our budget forms right now that's being submitted for that as, and I noticed in some historical information, I think it had been presented maybe once, once before in the 23 or 22 cycle. I don't know.
For a.
For a sixth judge.
Do you remember that, Dennis?
No. I don't remember.
Specifically.
Them adding anything for a sixth judge. We've been talking about it going forward and.
And maybe that's what I had seen.
The state has been, been publishing data that the caseload warrants another one, but that has to be approved by the legislature. So it wouldn't be for next year. It'd be.
I think it was recently approved by the Governor's Office or the AG.
Not the sixth one. That hasn't gone through. The fifth one was hanging for about 10 years.
Right.
As, as approved, we just didn't fund it until, until about three years ago. Was it four?
Well, in any event, I, my recollection is it, it has been, but I, maybe, maybe it's pending now saying we would support it.
I think, I think that's maybe where it's at. I don't.
Yeah. Okay. Anyhow, it's still the kind of thing where. Anyhow, it's still the kind of thing where.
Yeah, this, the system we currently have, it doesn't, it's not really set up very well to do scenario. Like, for example, it's not set up for a scenario of calculating a cola on certain positions.
Yeah.
I think it could be done with some macro, macro written based upon, whatever. Anyway, but if it doesn't really have any scenario ability built into it either. And so that's lacking.
Okay. I'm, I'm, it surprises me. I thought PeopleSoft could do anything if you bought the right modules. And I'm wondering if that's what the problem is.
Yeah.
We're still trying to use an old system that doesn't fit micro or.
No, I see the PeopleSoft is built, I think, on Oracle, isn't it? And Oracle has more flexibility than anybody will ever use. In fact, if you wanted to be a database administrator for Oracle, you almost have to have a master's degree with all the capabilities that it has. But that translates into you've got to get the right knowledgeable person in and you've got to keep that person because you've got maintenance on it and Oracle and PeopleSoft get upgrades. You've got to have somebody that, and so forth. The, the design of that thing is pretty significant. That's why I would typically favor the modular approach. Use this in its simple state so you don't have to pay the expert. And then, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's a relational database. It's very complex.
And they should be able to put out the, yeah, for, the, the question asked about scenario A and B, you ought to be able to just say, duplicate this and then play with that and then say, okay, save it, duplicate that. And you should be able to present this a dozen scenarios.
Yeah. And I, I can't do that easily with the, the system we have right now.
Yeah, okay. Here's to me, we'd be open to, after you get through the process of the workshop and just kind of.
Yeah.
If I, I think it's important that we be as efficient as we can and as transparent. Yeah. Yeah. And, and when you say efficient, the one part, of course, is just that it takes fewer keystrokes, I'd say, but you want it such that it supports the what-if experiments and there's no error in importing the data. One of the things that shocks me here is when people re-enter data by hand, they get a piece of paper from some department and they're entering it by hand. And I'm like, oh, my God. Yeah. I've swapped numbers a time or two myself, you know, yeah.
It's inevitable.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, so the budget is, is ongoing work and we'll, we'll get through it. And being without a budget analyst to help me, it's, it's, it's kind of a nightmare right now. So I'm, I'm doing the best I can. I have some temp help and that's, that's a little bit of relief. But anyway, so.
I, I think this, there, there are some issues here I'd like to discuss. Probably needs to be executive session, performance. The public employee, always the sooner the better. Do you want to put it on today or is that what you're asking? Today, if we have the time, yeah. Okay, sure. And I'd like, I'd like your attendance on that one.
Oh, okay. Right. And then putting on my risk management hat. We had a quarterly report that was due and I got that filled out and finished last week. And so it was sent off over the weekend. And so we're, I'm trying to stay caught up on all the risk management items as well. And I'm scheduled to have a workshop on risk management, the risk pool with you, I think on the 23rd, if I remember correctly. So I'll be ready for that.
Okay.
That's, that's all. I'm just catching, trying to catch up with everything.
Well.
Good to have you back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to be back. I was very tired of my, staying in my bedroom, isolated.
Yeah. Gets old fast, doesn't it?
Very old.
Yeah. I'm not sure I can ask that. I'll ask it. You don't have to answer. Was that the big C that you had?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I took a trip to go, I, I blame my, my friends that they must have brought it and gave it to me, brought it from Texas and gave it to me. But then I traced my steps back and I think I, I got it being on a crowded train on Wednesday, on the, the Wednesday I went to meet them. So. So they didn't bring it to me. They didn't bring me a Texas.
We can't blame it on Texas.
I can't, I can't blame it on Texas. So, oh darn.
The, the, you took care of it yourself. You didn't go and have it looked at to decide whether it's version X.
No, I didn't.
It was a new one on and I think I've sent H H S an article on it, on a few things like that. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I did go.
It'll be with us forever.
I did go, I did go seek medical treatment and, and they gave me a prescription to help, to help me get, I guess, better, sooner. But they didn't, they didn't perform a test. I just did my home test.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy.
Welcome.
Thank you. Corrections.
There it is.
There.
Good morning. Marin Fox, Director of Corrections. Our population this morning was 235 with 49 bookings over the weekend. So it was a pretty busy weekend for us. We did have a washer down since Thursday, but luckily maintenance got that fixed this morning. That's, well, not a washer, the washer. So not having a working washing machine while caring for 235 people is less than ideal, but it's working for the moment.
You don't need the air freshener?
I haven't gone inside the jail yet today, but I, I'm sure it's a little funkier than normal.
Didn't, didn't we just, didn't we replace the washing machine over there? About three years ago, two years?
That sounds possible. We did both of the dryers right at the very end of 19. Yeah, that sounds.
So it was, this was one of them?
We have one washer and two dryers. One of our dryers we're having issues with, but we had one functioning, but yeah, we only have one washing machine. So we were taking things over to U V N I L or.
And the warranty was up last month.
Probably, right.
And that's a commercial washer?
Yes.
How is that used in operations? That, that is to say, who gets access and what materials?
We have inmate workers that are assigned to laundry. So we.
And you take care of the bed sheets and the jumpsuits and all of that?
We don't have sheets anymore, but blankets, you know, so they, we exchange the linen, linens and greens with inmates once a week. So they're, they get new uniforms and we, we don't typically wash their personal belongings unless they're really terrible.
Enough.
Yeah. But when they're in custody, they have the opportunity to wash personal, personal clothes, their undergarments.
How do they do, do their own stuff?
We have mesh bags assigned to cells, numbers on them. And then we send them into the wash and then bring them back and hand them back out.
Pursuing the same line of question in three years doesn't seem, well, I imagine that machine is used 12 hours a day, probably on average.
We have night shift laundry and day shift laundry. So it's used, yep. It gets a lot of use. I'm not sure. It sounded like it was maybe a somewhat easy fix this morning. I haven't had a chance to talk to Will yet, but we're, we're back up and running. And they've got some, they've got some pile, piles of laundry to do that have gathered over the weekend.
With the turnover and maintenance, they may not be aware of that. It's a relatively new piece of equipment. They should figure it out, but.
I'll have to look it up. I'm not.
Well, there's that and I'm always suspicious of inmate games.
Right. They don't have access, it's fenced in.
Yeah.
So they, they don't have access to the.
I don't trust anybody.
The back of the machines or any of that. It's behind, it's secured.
I watch TV. I know what happens in the secure areas.
They are occasionally up to no good. You are correct. And I did look at some numbers, booking numbers after our discussion last week, just to compare January to June of 22 to 23. And I know we specifically talked about shoplifting in our world. That's the third. So in 2022, for the first six months, we had 342 people arrested or booked for, with that charge. In this year, we're at 649 for the same time period.
Wow.
So they are booking. And just.
That's just, that's for shoplifting.
Just shoplifting. That could be warrants as well. So we don't, there wouldn't be a differentiation that, that many inmates were charged with that crime.
When, when, when you say warrant, that could be a shoplifter of 22 that did something on parole and ended up getting pulled back in.
Right. So if they are released on any charge and it has not been fully adjudicated, maybe they didn't go to court. That's most typically what it is. They're not showing for their court appearances. So then there will be a warrant out for their arrest. So that.
Those are unique. You know, you could line up 649 people.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Well, I mean, one person could be booked for it six times.
Oh, but so then it's not.
Unique to charge, not unique to an individual.
Unique to charge, okay.
And unlawful camping, there were only three people booked for that in the first six months of last year. And this year we had 66 so far. So that's.
That's for what category?
Unlawful camping.
Oh.
And shopping cart violations, the illegal possession of a shopping cart. We had zero last year and we had 47 so far this year. So law enforcement is picking up some of those nuisance crimes that the community certainly sees the impact of. I haven't had a chance to go fully through the report. And I'll put together some, some numbers on paper to give you.
Is it possible to get unique individuals out of that 649?
I'll have to look. That's a report I.
It's a bit of a nuisance, I know.
Right. I'll see how, how easy it is to run that.
But I think that it seems in our society now a small percentage of people drain most of the resources.
That's true. That's all I have for today, unless you have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I T.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Hort, I T Director. I just wanted to give a couple of updates. I was out last week, so this is just me catching up from this morning. We are still having server room cooling issues, but we are working with facilities to get a finalized plan and strategy. The unit itself has failed and therefore it will need to be replaced. And they're coming up with some options for us to choose from in regards to that. We have the two positions that we had open for a while and I T have been filled. We're doing the paperwork and onboarding for those employees. And then we're doing offboarding for our summer help employee that is leaving this Wednesday. There are department contracts with like the jail and the auditor and I T that we are working on. So those will be on the agenda soon for consent or approval. And then we have our phone project. The timeline is still October of 2023 and our current system licensing runs through that. So we are good to run those systems in tandem. We have received servers and we are racking those this morning and have basic configurations on them that will be tailored to our system. And then we have done our final department inventory order for equipment, phones and headsets.
So weren't the servers kind of the delay? Do I remember that right? So?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah. They estimated that they would be here mid-August and it's mid-August. So. But we were able to get our legacy system and the licensing in tandem. So everything is squared away, squared away for both systems. Before I went on vacation, I met with legal in regards to the retention policy. They are still reviewing the edits proposed from Commissioner Mortensen. And they also advised that I T work with the elected officials throughout the county to ensure that we have their buy-in on the policy. And then this Wednesday, we have a work session scheduled with you guys. And since it involves cybersecurity, it will be an executive session. And that will address matters such as our strategy for retention and our Microsoft licensing and Barracuda.
Okay.
Questions or concerns?
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Miscellaneous, before we do the executive session, can I just ask about, because I had a call on my machine and I think it came out right before I took off on animal control. Sheriff Thurman was wondering if we've had any discussion on that. I don't know if you guys have talked on what we want to do.
You know, you know, the issue.
Yeah.
Mean societies.
Yeah, not going to do the control part anymore.
After the end of the year.
After the.
My, my assumption is the default responsibility lies with the sheriff's department.
Yeah, I think that's correct. And we would probably expect to have to add a specific animal control officer. I don't think that's a bad thing, but. Yeah. Yeah.
So you, you might want to reach out to the sheriff and just let him know we're, we're patiently waiting for his recommendations.
Okay, that's kind of what the call sounded like, is that he was wanting to know what we were thinking. So I just wanted to bring it up, see if you've had any discussion, but it sounds like that's.
I do know that the day of the ribbon cutting at 911, the talk, talking at the parking lot afterwards between the, the police chiefs and the sheriff were specifically on that. So I know, I know they've been visiting.
So specific, very specific to your question, I have had no discussions.
Correct.
So my reaching out to Sheriff Thurman to just say, we're kind of looking for a plan from you and bring it to us and take a look?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that. Anything else miscellaneous you want to do before we do that? Uh, so how are we doing on, I guess, the other one is we could have at the second meeting. Cause that's probably something where Mike Moss could partake. So I'd, I'd like another executive session. In the 11 o'clock meeting? Yeah, at the 11 o'clock. Okay. So we'll go to, and this one was on. Performance of a, of a public employee. So in any timeframe? Let's start with 20 minutes. 20 minutes? Yeah. So we go into executive session, performance of employee for 20 minutes?
Wanted Kathy to join us, right?
Wanted Kathy to join us, right? Okay.
Okay, we're back from an executive session. No decisions were made. Any other miscellaneous for this ten o'clock meeting? Sina, we will.
Do we want to broach any? How much time we have? Nine minutes. Do we want to use that up or have a break? Because I, I think the mental health tax stuff is still something that's on my mind about some some high level thoughts that have come to my mind on that. Maybe, maybe the Dennis, it's. We won't conclude anything. I'm just throwing out.
Yeah.
We also have another topic, which is the request on hand for a sixth judge.
You just looking for thoughts on these two things?
I, I would, we, we've got to start talking about them and this is the only place we can really, really talk about them.
Well, I'll just throw a thought and I'll preface it by saying I'm not married to all this if we're just throwing out ideas here.
Yeah.
On the mental health tax, if, if we have funds to keep status quo, I would like to see that go, go away. I, I not opposed to it coming back, but I'd like to really see it. Um, if it came back to be something tangible that we had a facility for mental health or we had something that we could, uh, we could show people that this is what their money's going for. We actually have a place for these people now, those, those type of things. And instead of just salaries.
Yeah. In, in keeping with that, uh, some of my thoughts are. We, we spend some of those dollars on programs and some of those programs, I don't think we should continue in the manner that they're continued. And I can go into that one. Uh, the other one is. We can, instead of a step function off, we can at point one percent down to zero to point oh five percent. Uh, so whenever I think of policies with, with the public. Uh, I step functions are things I'm always very careful of. So a full step is not as hard to take as a half step. Now I realize that we've, we've, we've got the, the cash available from the, from the mental health tax, but that can go away rather quickly. And, uh, so I'm, I'm going to be more conservative than ever. I agree with your sentiment on that. The other one is. I will not, under any circumstance, support something that doesn't have a sunset clause on it. So I'm thinking, for example, uh, maybe you'd be interested in a point oh five with a one year sunset clause on it.
Yeah.
Something as a.
I just, and I'm open to any of that. I just think that that it's been in place since two thousand twelve, and I think times have changed and we really need to relook at that. We, you, you just can't send people to Western State or Eastern like you used to. And it almost feels like you need some kind of outlet in your, in your communities.
Right. One of the reasons to have this discussion now is exactly what you just said. So we have a chunk of money. Is there a way we can use it? And, and, um, that might be.
But you know, we had discussed earlier this year, at least the, the, the idea, the concept that all those unused beds at juvie could be converted into an adult facility.
Yeah.
I mean, there has to be strict segregation. You can't mix those populations at all. But that reserve is something one time only type. Um, improvement to make beds available for folks who need to be isolated. Um, but we haven't been, we haven't talked about that recently. So.
Right. So that.
I don't know if there's anybody on staff that's that's championed or whether it's up to us to.
I don't know. Agreed. And, and that may be something where we have to contract out. Uh, I'm thinking we, we haven't yet begun to experience what AOT will do for us. AOT is the softer version of ITA. Involuntary Treatment Act. Where you don't have to get locked up essentially, but you do have checking and so forth. Uh, in the absence of better definition, I'd be. If you said, I, I would prefer not to reinstate the text. I'll support that. It's very easy to reinstate it afterwards.
Yeah. I just, I kind of along the lines of Commissioner Weber, I, I just don't think we can depend on the state to take care of some of these, these patients anymore. And so, uh, and I don't unless somebody else reads the tea leaves different, I don't see that changing in the future. And I think Callis County. Will have to step up and start taking care of some of these. So if we're going to, if I'm going to ask money from the people, I want them to see something tangible that we can, we're actually here trying, trying to, trying to help. And so if we can make something like that work, I'm much more open to that than just salary dollars going out every year.
Right. And that will force us to go through in detail, like I, I, I'll throw the, throw the, the hand grenade out. I've been thinking about the, uh, behavioral health courts and expenses. It'll be somewhat of a discussion, but it'll be like six, the two thirds. Go to drug court and one third go to, uh, mental health court. I am thinking along these lines and sure my phone will be ringing off the hook of, of suggesting we do not do drug court anymore. There are some issues there, uh, and I can discuss them, may not be popular, but I think I can discuss them enough that I'm thinking, yeah, that is a reasonable statement and a behavioral health court, I just don't know enough. What, what do you do with people that don't want to be part of society or have some stuff? That would save a lot of money. And then, uh, I'm, I'm looking at the clock. Uh, we've got, uh, uh, the sheriff's stuff, we, we authorized for people to go with the sheriff's department. And the idea was that, that was to help the deputies. But, uh, from testimony from two of the people in the, uh, that were employed as a consequence of that, it's just another welfare system, uh, that's system. Frankly, I feel betrayed is too strong a word because there was never that personal something or other, but I feel they never really understood. I really care about the sheriff deputies and that they, if they need help, I'm happy to find them help, but I don't not want to create another welfare system out of that. So I would cut them from four down to one right there. So I've just labeled a lot of savings.
Yeah. Well, there's certainly more discussion to, to come. I, I think if people ask, ask the three of us, do we think we should look at and maybe utilize that better? They probably get nodding heads. Yes. Now, how we each view that better part is certainly open for discussion, but. How, but.
Right.
Good to have. Yeah.
Yeah, I know. These are tough topics, but that's why we get.
That, that's why we're here, right?
Yep. And then don't forget, we're going to have one, uh, an executive session here after this meeting or as at the end of this meeting.
At the end of the eleven o'clock meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are. In fact, I think we have more than one because Mike had, has some stuff too.
Oh, good. He's the one with.
Yeah. So anything else for our ten o'clock? We'll adjourn that one. Okay. We'll adjourn.
Oh, one, one comment. Did you notice how close we were to my estimate on that one?
Yeah. Yeah. I just. Welcome to the eleven o'clock meeting with, uh, Public Works. I just didn't want to build your ego too high on.
I know, I know.
Good morning. Uh, Mike Moss, Public Services Director. I had eleven o'clock executive session scheduled. Uh, I moved that to eleven twenty, hearing from the last meeting, thinking you were going to start this meeting with executive session.
Did you want to start with?
With your executive session first before ours, because I have Doug Jensen joining us at eleven twenty for our executive session, knowing that you guys were already scheduling one ahead of us. So if you want to do the one that Commissioner Mortensen brought up first before the meeting before, then after the meeting, that works for us.
Yeah, my executive session is, uh, real estate and it's just in the spirit of here's a thought that I think we should consider and I could do that in five minutes. We were, we're, we.
That involve Mike too?
Uh, yes, it involves Mike.
So could it just, are you saying just follow Mike's session at eleven twenty?
Uh, we could do that. We, uh, well, yeah.
Do you have much of another agenda other than?
Yeah, I have a quite a large agenda. I could bring it up to you now. So we can start there, then break away at eleven twenty.
Sure. How about that?
Mr. Jensen's going to join us.
Okay.
Okay.
I saw their signs on Mount Pleasant. We're gonna shut that down for, is that us doing some work?
Yeah, they're doing some. It's only private.
Two days, I think. Yeah.
So usually we start off with building and planning, but I also told them to come later because we're, we're going to plan an executive session to start with. So we'll go ahead and jump into facilities, maintenance and purchasing, if that's all right.
So, so if you don't have to share the mic, maybe you want to use that.
Sure.
That makes sense to you, Mr. Chairman? Yeah.
Just as long as he gets out of the way of the maddening crush in the public.
Well, that's true.
So the first item we have is landscape agreement. Our current agreement with Northwest. Uh, here Northwest Environmental Landscape Services ends August thirty first. Um, we have addendum or here for additional one year. Uh, we had some issues, I believe, at the very beginning with some of the landscape items around from all our, our campuses, but the last, you know, nine, 10 months, I think they've done a really good job. I've reached out to some other departments. They, they've said the same thing. So in the contract, we have additional years available for extensions with no price increase. So we'd like to bring that to you guys next Tuesday on the agenda of, uh, extending the contract for one more year with Northwest Environmental Landscapes. And that cost is fifty five thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars for the year.
And is, is that going to include any management of the Ivy that seems to be covering up parking signs?
Nominal. Uh, it is in here, actually read through here today on the Ivy. I should have highlighted that. Um, give me one second here.
And Will just walked in. Landscaping contract he's looking at.
Ivy planning beds shall be cut back at least once annually, annually to control growth and promote plant health. Ivy shall be removed from build, all building wall exteriors, utility vaults, pads, transfers and equipment, fire hydrants and pathways. Um, I know we did that a couple of years back on the HRJ with a separate contract. It's, it's quite large. I think HOJ might be its own beast. I think we're going to, we plan on doing that in-house with our public works crew. But the rest of the Ivy around here, I think they did already did some cutting between us and, and post office earlier in the contract, but probably not the last few months. So we can, we can readdress that with them.
I mean, it's crawling up the.
Yeah, it goes so fast. Yeah. I've talked to Jennifer from Noxious Weeds about, she's actually sent me some items, uh, pamphlets, how to control it better.
Oh, it's.
It's called a blowtorch.
Exactly. That's pretty good root system. You gotta pretty much take it all the way out. That's what we plan to do in HOJ. We've not, not, not just spraying it, but we plan on taking it. That's why bringing the skid steer in with our crews to get all the dirt out too, just excavate it completely.
So, so, so that's the Ivy technique of grounds landscaping. You deal with it once every 20 years. Otherwise, any other kind of landscaping is a constant maintenance.
It is constant. Yeah.
And I kind of get that from.
Last summer, we did it kind of with, before a contract was in place with summer help and other crews and it was kind of a fiasco. So it's nice to have somebody under contract. So. And they have all the campuses, museum, HHS here, um, HOJ. So not all of them. There's a few, I think jail and juveniles, but maintain their own. So if you guys are okay with moving forward, I'll put on the agenda next week.
Just, just, uh, this is a poor man's, uh, landscaping maintenance. Has nothing to do with upgrading anything.
Correct. Just, just maintaining what we currently have. No new, um, tearing out no trees and maintenance of our that we, I know we have some issues around the building here, removing some of the older shrubbery and maybe some of the bricks and stuff like that. Maybe it does not include that at all. No.
Does it include revitalizers?
Yes.
Okay, so.
And actually they're working on, they asked the, as a small addition, I mean, I'm talking hundreds of dollars to work on the museums of water system over there so they can keep their grass green. It's, there's a couple of heads that are broken and a line that's broken. So they've asked if they could replace that and we said yes. So, yeah. Right. Well, add it to next week. Since Tracy's here, we, if we want to, we can jump over to, nope, building and planning items. We have quite a few. So if you want to, if you have to mention.
Yeah, yeah.
If that's okay with the chairman. Sorry, I should have asked you first. Apologize.
I was gonna say, if you let me play on one of those hoes, I'd dig that Ivy out of there for you.
Stand up, stand down, hand up. I didn't know if I'd make it up here in time. You switched it on me. Well.
Commissioners, I just wanted to give you a quick update. Um, we've got building and planning advisory, uh, committee this week on Thursday. Uh, planning commission is on Wednesday. They've got a, a larger agenda for Wednesday. Um, looking at a comp plan amendment for the Carlin Loop area. And then the floodplain management ordinance, the one foot, three foot, uh, base elevation is another discussion. Bringing back the private road standards and then the boundary line adjustment, a draft idea of what an ordinance, we've been working with Doug. We've got Doug's way in now, so they're going to take his recommendations to the planning commission and see what transpires from that. Um, International Way, we met with the Port of Longview, uh, last week. I mentioned the, the six rail lines coming in. And then one of the board members asked about the International Way crossing. We met with them this last week. Um, they're still in design phase on that and it's completely separate from the six line. Um, so totally separate project. Um, and that project completion date is, um, scheduled for about twenty twenty nine. So they've got a ways to go on that, but they're still in design phase, but they're now going to be releasing the latest, um, mapping of what the, that new realignment looks like and then working with the business owners that could be affected. So.
Okay, uh, comment on that. I've been contacted about that. I think probably all of you have. There seems to be concern by the businesses along industrial, international way. And they're not quite sure they believe what they were seeing then. I don't know if that has changed, just to let us all know that there is citizen concern over that.
And, and their, the latest design just came out the end of last week. And they are, um, going to meet with then the property owners from
Oh.
in the affected area between now and the end of the month. So they were letting us know they had the design plan, but we were not shown the, the total and final. they were letting us know they had the design plan, but we were not shown the, the total and final plan. So it's still in, it's still in the works. Um, we had our first stakeholders meeting with the city of Woodland. Um, and that is the one where we're using the contract attorney uh, that Doug helped us find. And um, I don't know that it was kind of a disarray meeting, shall we say? There was a lot of complaints about the city of Woodland, different studies that have been done years past.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Could you go more slowly on that?
There, um, there wasn't a lot that we could contribute in that meeting. There was a lot of um, the citizens that were there. They were just.
Just the public in general.
The public in general. There was a lot of um, different agencies there, but the public in general just had a lot of concerns with some of the studies that Woodland has done in the past. And they said they're just studies. They're just studies. Well, they were heard, Woodland heard them. Um, so we're gonna um, kind of sit back and let Woodland deal with some of their issues that you know, we know the traffic study is going to be the biggest issue and exit 21 is their largest ticket item. So um, we're working with CDID number two uh, on their drainage study. And um, the port of Woodland on some of their larger projects coming forward. So.
This is the stakeholder meeting that's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I have another one. Um, Savannah and I, we talked about um, a while ago, we worked with Commissioner Dahl. Um, we had some ideas about um, low income housing um, dollars for maybe some static fixed costs for um, income, income relevant um, citizens that could use the low income housing or the dock fees for static costs to get into uh, homes, whether it be water costs, sewer costs, electrical hookups, um, kind of those static costs that they wouldn't have out of pocket expenses. And their income would qualify them for a low income housing to try to help make more income, affordable housing for lower income people. And we didn't know what, if the board wants us to kind of move forward with that. Do you want, I know the board's been um, supporting different, like the senior housing idea, concept with the city of Kelso. Um, I was trying to think of some other ones that the city is, or the uh, you guys, uh, the board funded campus towers or parts of it um, of their project. So there's some three, it seems like there's kind of three bigger ticket items. And I didn't know if the board wanted us to kind of continue to meet with and see what we could come up with. If you wanted us to pursue it, if you wanted us to look the other way, ignore it. Well, I didn't know what the board's direction would be. And I'll turn that over to Savannah. Did I capture?
So what's the, what's the scope here of what you're looking for on that?
Well, we were, we had had some, a, a few meetings with Health Department, Gina, Carol, uh, Doug's office about what we could use the dock recording fees and some of the low income affordable housing dollars for. It, we were looking at alternate ways or means that we could get um, people that met the income threshold, that we could get them into more affordable housing and pay some of their static costs.
So your, your road is permitting, planning.
For my side of it, yes.
From your side.
Yeah.
So you're not speaking about that specifically, you're speaking about the general overall picture, which leaves me confused then as to why that's in your lap.
Um, I was just going to chime in. So just to kind of give a timeline, um, and Commissioner Doll is more than welcome to cut me off too. Um, when Commissioner Doll first came on, um, there was some curiosity as far as how those dock recording fees were used, how could they be used? What are their avenues could we pursue? Aside from maybe just getting the funding requests for the homeless um, camps and, and that topic. Uh, and so Tracy and I were involved in that because at that time we were heavily involved with the public services aspect and building and planning and she had just come on board. Um, so we were working together on that to see what other avenues we could find. Um, and then how it could relate to building and planning was the static costs that Tracy's talking about. So.
What do you mean static costs? Static means it doesn't change, right?
It, it's a one-time cost that maybe the water hookup for uh, that they would pay the cities for or county services. Uh, uh, we were looking at, I don't know, tangible, maybe that's better or um, more costs that are related to utilities. So like she mentioned water sewer, electrical hookups, um, costs that were set by the P U D or set by that jurisdiction for water sewer uh, by local governments, something that we could say, okay, this is a, this is a cost that we can account for. This person's income eligible by federal poverty guidelines or percentage of whatever the board would determine. We were just really in the beginning stages of brainstorming.
Yeah.
Options is really.
Some of the thoughts were on it, like could you partner with Habitat in, when they're building some homes and help with some of that?
Right.
Whatever there is to get those in, just to try to, to, to get, in my mind, uh, homeownership is a big thing for me. And if we could partner with somebody and help, and, and I wasn't clear as to what you could all use that dock recording fees. We throw a lot of it out there. But if we could partner with a Habitat or something like that, or even uh, uh,
Cap?
Maybe Cap or, or Mr. Wood came in with a proposal. How do we maybe leverage some of those to, to create some housing that people can actually get into and, and work with?
And we kind of saw it as not, and Mr. Wood had come in and he had it, it was kind of a similar, I guess. That was more of a partnership and agreements. Ours would be really um, within, you know, building and planning, um, within what we could control in the county. Uh, we, we did have an opportunity, um, Sean and I met with Habitat for Humanity to recognize maybe some of the barriers that they were seeing for affordable housing within the county permitting process. Um, and you know, of course they were very favorable for maybe the permit side of things. Maybe um, once a project was complete and it, and it met X, Y, Z criteria as established by the board, they could get a permit refunded based off of um, you know, those funds available. So the county would still be made whole through dock recording. Um, but, but they would not have to pay that permit fee. Something, we were trying to get creative, you know, and, and some solutions.
Just to help people get in.
Yep.
Into homes, I think. Yeah, I, I, I know I've been fond of the refunding the permit fees. Provided the thing was built and usable.
Right.
Yeah, that kind of thing. Uh, but it also sounded like you were maybe suggesting that the, the argument being you cannot put housing here because there is no infrastructure. So can we use the dock recording fees to extend the water and sewer lines or something like that?
Right. We were really open to, that was one thing mentioned. We were very open to kind of at the board's direction, you know, um, exploring some of those options.
The, the thing I don't like about some of the stuff I've heard is that we be picking winners and losers. With Habitat for Humanity, I think people are putting in elbow grease and all that. It seems pretty well managed. So I, I don't have a problem with that. But trying to build a community, uh, Larry Wood thing, I still don't have it in my head. How that is.
Yeah, that came as a surprise. Actually called Tracy because we, you know, we were kind of, we're working on this behind the scenes to try to just gather more information and then he had done his presentation, but we weren't, uh, we did not communicate with Mr. Wood at all.
Yeah.
Kind of his own.
Yeah.
Suggestion.
So what's the next step?
Well, I think you're just asking if we're still interested in something like that. And me personally, if you're asking me personally, yeah, I'm, I'm interested. I would love if we could partner with an agency like Habitat and that these people actually work and put and try to get them into, into homes. I, I'm, I'm uh, very strong about putting people in homes. I think once they, they get into a home, a lot of things happen in the community's favor and in their favor. I've, I've told you before, I've watched, I was part of that. Only did a home or two up in that development in Cass Rock, but when you go through it, it's still very, there's pride of ownership. It's, it's a good neighborhood.
Yeah. And the, the only thing I would make it super explicitly clear is that works because somebody put their heart and soul in it and their elbow grease.
Yes.
Yeah. And so, so if, if they're willing to do that, if we have the ability, I would like to walk beside them a little bit if we can. Sure.
Yeah, I would think we'd be able to buy the lumber necessary or the shingles, whatever.
We'll pursue it and we'll start working more with Gina and Carol's group.
Yeah, I think council has it now. I think it's been kind of sitting with, uh, with legal. So we just wanted to make sure before we pushed that we were still okay to do so.
Those things mentioned, I probably prefer Habitat over re-refunding the permit costs, but it, one could argue it either way. I just like people putting in effort to get something back. That's a lesson we seem to have lost.
Would it be advantageous to request maybe a presentation by Habitat for Humanity to just outline to the board what their general criteria is and their program?
I would love to be educated on that myself.
Yeah.
If they'd be willing to do that, sure.
I'm sure they would. And they've actually been attending some of our B pack meetings as well, building and planning advisory, just as uh, members of the public.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I won't be at, I missed the last two B packs, but.
We can have them at a workshop so that the board can be here. It'll be public.
We'll talk about you on Thursday then.
Yeah. You can talk about me when I'm there. I don't care.
I'm teasing. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Mike, we, you're 11:20?
Wow.
So.
Time plug. Yes, I think we, I sent Kelly uh, contract negotiations. We have three items under there, about 15 minutes and then um, performance of a public employee. Sorry. Thank you for five minutes.
So will.
I, I'm, my notes aren't here.
So go to an executive session for.
15 minutes for contract.
Contract.
And then five minutes for performance of a public employee. And then if we have a second one.
Five minutes for real estate disposal or something like that.
We got all that? Okay. We'll do it.
Well, Doug's on the line. She can probably come for, she coming for all she say. Yeah, have her come.
Oh, I'm amazed. You're attending online. But you're here at a left around two places at one time.
The personality.
That's.
The board is extending the executive session for a period of five minutes until eleven. Eleven fifty seven.
Well, the she does a lot with many other things. There's our hands on our things. Oh. I might be putting this, you know, you kind of drive it. Well.
We're back from executive session. No decisions were made. We'll continue on.
Hello, Casey Helm, Human Resources Deputy Director. Um, one request is from Public Works, so they would like to fill the ER and R supervisor at step two.
Do we?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve that request.
It's been moved. I don't. Let me check and make sure I don't get any hands. I see none. I call for the vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I have some big shoes to fill today. Susan is on vacation, taking her daughter to Virginia Tech. School starts there on Wednesday, so she's on the East Coast. Um, she has a couple items tomorrow on the consent. Uh, Abernathy Creek painting contract. You guys actually approved that bid award on. By July eighteenth. It's for one hundred forty seven thousand and the company is. Marica Group. They're actually located here out of Longview, so they got the low, they were the low bid at one forty seven. Like I said before, you guys are already bid awarded, but it is on the consent for the paperwork tomorrow is the contract execution side of it. So she discussed that on a motion item. The second item is a vacation request. This is for an unnamed road off of Rink Road. Uh, the vacation came in from the landowner out there. Uh, you guys, I think she's talked to you a few times on different vacation for roads around here. Uh, that one there is. She, she gave me a memo, actually. So this is the first step of a four step process. Uh, the first step is for the board by resolution that they receive the request, they intend to vacate the roadway, and they direct the county engineer to complete an engineering report. So tomorrow, you're pretty much accepting that there's been a request to vacate a portion of the road near Rink Road and Castle Rock. And then she'll go ahead and do an engineering report. The second step is to do the report. The third step is to set a public hearing. And the final step is to hold the hearing and adopt a resolution to vacate the roadway or deny the request. So, uh, tomorrow is just the first step in that process.
Tomorrow is just step one.
Yeah.
To take. Okay, or to take a look at it.
Yeah, that's the same place I went out to visit.
Correct. It is. Yep. I believe she's hoping to get this done by end of September, all four steps.
Yeah, I support. It made sense when you looked at it. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. The third item is a bit award. This is for our rock for the landfill. This went through Sean and purchasing. And he can give you a quick update on that. It's actually a motion item for tomorrow. It's on the agenda tomorrow on the motion side. I believe it might be your only motion item tomorrow.
Yeah, so this is our annual, uh, rock delivery contract for the landfill, uh, something we go out for on an annual basis. Um, the little bidder this time was JL Store It All, uh, for approximately two hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. It's our normal process. We do about, uh, six to seven thousand tons annually of large, large scale rock delivery to the landfill itself.
It is in the contract for them not to take South Silver Lake Road, which is, uh, put in there a few years ago from the neighbors. So they do have to go if Store It All uses the Tower Road pit, they will go down the freeway and come up Headquarters Road and not take the cutoff road.
Yeah, they'll have to use your bridge.
No, it's right before they're, 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 uh, right before like quarter mile before the, the temporary bridge.
And the next up, uh, is the Tenet Way Electrical Services Contract. This is a on-call basis for both electrical and mechanical work at the Tenet Way landfill. This will be on the agenda.
Hmm, possibly next week.
Following Tuesday, I believe. Um, this is funded by the post closure costs of the landfill itself. Um, this mainly work on the gas systems, the, uh, plumbing and pump systems to handle leachate at that's, at that site. Uh, normally on an annual basis, we do between twenty and thirty thousand dollars of, of maintenance work at that site. Um, currently we have a large job going right now that would have been covered under a contract like this that we went out for the bid. The on-call contract gives us the ability to have that quick turnaround time on any of the, uh, systems at that site itself. And.
Uh, on that landfill, um. How's our, how's the budget doing and how close are we to saying we're done?
I believe we have twenty three more years to go on that site.
Okay.
So we, we do have a substantial nest egg for the post closure costs of it.
And at the rate we're consuming, the, the funds. We're okay?
We are. We've, uh, annually been less than our estimated cost moving forward.
Do you know exactly what's the reserves there? Guest?
I would guess about seven million dollars.
How much?
About seven million.
Okay. With inflation, you just can't be sure. Twenty three years is a long time.
It sure is.
Percent a year or something.
Can you give a couple examples of what the twenty or thirty thousand like we would spend this year on mechanical stuff out there?
Yeah, so if in the, the leachate system has a number of, of pump systems throughout it to move it throughout the property and into through rivers for treatment. So that'd be, you know, the pump itself, the material plus the labor to install that. Um, say if we have an electrical alarm of some sort throughout the system, they come in and repair that. Or the PLCs or motor controls or anything of that nature.
The, uh. The gas being produced is cleared off or just let go?
Yes, that's a, a, a small flare system on site there.
You know about how many CFM?
I can sure find out. From my understanding, it's quite small.
It is, it is decreasing, right?
It has decreased significantly from the last time of operation.
And I, to, the. Quarter of Longview, we're still in discussions, right?
We are. We're expecting a offer. They said third quarter of this year, but my guess it's probably pushing to the fourth quarter. They're actually touring the site again with PUD about the poles this Thursday.
So you're familiar what that is?
No. Uh, adding additional lines to the rail lines, uh, needing property from us. Uh, pretty, pretty much where the old transfer station was at, the big build metal building there.
Yeah.
Uh, so right next to Verizon Tower, I, I couldn't, I, on my, off the top of my head, exactly how many acres it is, but it's a few acres there. We have some monitoring sites. They need to be relocated. Um. PUD needs to relocate some of their big main power lines through that area. So they're looking, there, there's still a bottleneck at the Couch River at the bridge there because that's not getting, uh, expanded. But they want additional lines to pass us through pack fiber through the log ponds. So I think it's six additional lines, but the way it sounds like may be done in stages. I don't know if all six lines are gonna get done at once. It might be. Four and then two later down the road.
It, it's about half a dozen acres if I recall correctly.
It's a weird shape.
It's a long strip.
It's a long strip and it turns around the corner there, so I don't, I can't tell you exactly.
And, and the thing about it, 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 it will get used productively. Because it's part of the port facility.
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
For mainly for staging.
Pretty good job down there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then they did core samples, they bored, they, they've been out there quite often, uh, checking the grounds out. Uh, they actually were giving us an offer last year, found out they had to do a, a NEPA instead of a SEPA. So they re, uh, pulled that offer back and now there sounds like they're ready to make a, a new offer to us.
Good.
Yeah, Mr. Morris is exactly right. It's unused area for us. It's pretty much, we, we did it for some staging stuff and, um. Hold some events out. I think the tire amnesty event is held underneath that building, but for the most part it's, it's vacant. It's, it's challenged with the rail crossing right there.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we had discussed at one point to. Putting the camp, uh, Camp Alabama equivalent there, but, uh. BNSF was not a happy camper, not that they had a veto on that, but, uh, they knew it would cause them problems. Uh, people doing stuff, dumping it onto tracks.
Yeah.
Including themselves or passed out bodies, uh, it. It has electricity though, and it's got water. It's got roof.
Yep. Yep.
Anyhow, that's just a sidebar.
The next item, LT one closure. We, uh, haven't closed it yet, but we had discussions in the office. I figured I'd put it on the agenda today. We closed that down, LT ones near the, um, Castle Rock exit fifty two near the gun range. Uh, has a separate gate system. A lot of people recreate out there mainly off-roading, um.
Oh.
A lot of times we close it down during high fire danger starting today. We have, uh, red. Red flag alerts through Thursday with high temperature and winds, so we thought we might close it down this afternoon through. Thursday, probably reopen it Friday for the weekend because we're supposed to be back down the low eighties, high seventies. So if you guys are okay with that, we'd probably just move forward, closing that down, signing it, and then also putting, uh, uh, press release out. Um. Neighbors and fire districts are pretty. They're appreciative if we do close that down out there.
Yeah, you, is it you who makes the decision?
I don't know. In the past, we've come to ask you guys. I don't know if, if I have the luxury of closing it down, so.
Well, okay, sorry. Let, let me rephrase that. Uh, you don't. You come to us with a recommendation, right? And you don't come to us with a recommendation you pull out of hot air. You actually talk to the fire district.
Yeah, my recommendation and theirs would be to shut it down for the week. So we'll, if, I guess I'll just tell you guys, we're gonna be shutting it down. This is mainly to tell you guys we're doing.
Yeah. Yeah.
A, a notification. I will do that in the future for you if that's the way you guys want to work that, Chairman.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the last one is a day of caring request. This comes from United Way. Uh. In years past, they've asked to, uh, us for a free dump pass or transfer station for free drop-offs there. Last year we did about four hundred dollars. They did about four hundred dollars worth of, um. Transfer station. Um, loads. Not, that's not a huge amount, but they, they have about five hundred volunteers to go do different projects around Calis County. A lot of the time it's mainly debris pickup or, you know, they might be landscaping and, you know, it's, 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 uh. Landscape material. Uh, so they've asked if they could once again use the transfer station free for that day. We give them a, a different code. It's for one day only. So when, and I know it doesn't get abused. So if you guys are okay with that, that request does have to go through you guys because it's, um, a special.
Yeah, I don't have any trouble.
Okay.
Helping United Way.
Yeah, we'll tell them yes. Great. Thank you. And then, yeah, uh, we've asked, you guys asked to have Mr. Mallett here for an LT one presentation. That's on the calendar, I believe, for September sixth. If you, if you guys are, it sounds like Kelly and Savannah worked a date out that you're all gonna be here. So I think September sixth is it?
That's for, uh, doing on a Wednesday, Kelly? Is that a night Wednesday? It's a day Wednesday?
That would be a day Wednesday because that's the first Wednesday.
Oh, yeah. Uh, that would be, I think a meeting I would think would be heavily attended in the afternoon, in, in the late afternoon. I'm just throwing that out as a suggestion.
It would have to be in October then if, um, we would have all three commissioners here.
Would we be okay to do two if we could? Um, Jim does, uh, prefer to do in person, but due to the acoustics of this room, it's not feasible for him and his hearing. So he actually is going to have to zoom in and it might be good to do a crash course with the board first prior to going, um, into a, a heavily attended meeting. So just a suggestion. He, he wouldn't mind doing it twice.
I don't mind.
Yeah.
If you guys don't mind hearing it.
So, so we'll stay on the sixteenth and.
Sixth. We'll stay on the sixth and then we can also get put onto the October evening agenda as well.
Okay.
Hey.
All right. That's all we have for today unless you guys have any more miscellaneous items. Sorry to keep you a little bit later. We had quite a list today.
Yeah. I'm good.
I'm good.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Anything else?
No.
Okay. We will adjourn for the day. Thank you.